Welcome, everyone, to the Portola Valley Planning Commission for May 3, 2023. We'll start with roll call. Brothers?
Here.
Commissioner Krasinski?
Here.
Commissioner Targ is not present yet. Vice Chair Goulden?
Present.
Chair Copsell?
Present.
Great, so first we'll have oral communications. So this is a time for residents or others to talk to us about something that is not on the agenda. And on the agenda, we have choosing a new chair and vice chair, talking about the priory, conditional use permit, and then minutes from our last meeting, March 6. So if anybody has a topic that's not one of those, this would be a time to bring it up. So I'll look for people in the schoolhouse or hands on Zoom. And I see one hand on Zoom. It's the phone number, and it ends 7562. Is that you, Caroline? But we'll unmute you.
Good evening, Chair Copsell. Yes, indeed, this is me. I just wanted to make sure that you got my email. I have had some issues not being able to attend the meetings, and that's why I wanted to make sure that I sent an email. I wanted to make at least one correction in the minutes. And that pertains to the oral communication that I delivered for the March 6 meeting. So I don't know if I should address this now, or if you received the email and it has been corrected.
I did not get an email, but it would be great if you brought that up when we get to the March 6 meeting minutes, which is item number six on our agenda. If you could call in then and bring it up, that would be really good.
Okay, so it was sent to your planning email yesterday before 12 o'clock. And we have had issues with communication with the town. So once again, it's unfortunate that it happened again. But I will stay on, so thank you.
Okay, thanks. Great, any other, anybody in the schoolhouse? I don't think so. Okay, great, I'll close oral communications. Actually, I have one thing to bring up myself, if I think appropriate for oral communications. Our town attorney, Cara Silver, often attends our meetings. She's not here tonight, but has resigned. And I just want to be on record as thanking her for her service. She's just unbelievable in my mind at explaining complex things and legal things and housing things in a calm way, and stays here till late at night and keeps answering questions in just a very polite, clear way. And I, for one, am gonna really miss her. So I'm sorry she's not here tonight. I see we don't need her tonight, so of course, that makes sense. But I think we might not have another meeting before she's not working for us anymore. So I just wanted to say thank you. Wants to say anything, it'd be fine. Yes, we'll move on.
I definitely agree and would echo that. I just joined recently, but it was super helpful having her.
Great. I will pass that along. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, yeah.
I can only join in the sentiments that you've expressed.
Great, thanks, Nicholas. Through the chair, I'm sorry, but Commissioner Targ, I'm not allowed to let you participate via Zoom.
Interesting. Planning Director, I received the invitation from you that to, with the Zoom link, to participate.
Yeah, because the commissioners use their computers to log in in both places, like to be on the computer while they're here.
Interesting. Well, in that case, I will come and join you for a little bit. I'm supposed to be on a flight a little bit later on this evening, and I stayed local so I could participate. I appreciate that clarification. I will see you soon.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Nicholas, good. Great, so we'll go to our first agenda item, which I'm pleased to announce is rotation of the chair and vice.
How pleased are you?
How pleased am I? So I think, as people know, we often serve for about a year and then rotate to new people. And we have a kind of a pattern that we rotate through. We did have an unusual pattern last time. Me being the chair was in the normal rotation, but then the vice chair would normally have been Nicholas Targ. But he and I are both recused on the Stanford Wedge Project. So we thought, oh, that's not great to have a chair and a vice chair that might get recused on a certain meeting. So we jumped to have John Goulden be the vice chair. So now we're faced with the decision, do we want to take the vice chair and make him chair, which would be normal, or go and pull Nicholas in, because he was in the rotation, and pull him up to chair? I think either systems could be rational things to do. It's like entertain discussion.
I'm just wondering if there's any way to wait until he arrives here.
Yeah, since he's coming down, we may actually just want to do that. We only have one item on the agenda tonight. If nobody objects, I mean, hopefully, he'll be here quickly.
Oh, and just wait.
Just wait or just wait. We could also do the minutes and get that done while Commissioner Goulden is here. So that would be another, at least, productive choice. That's right, the minutes would be useful. We should not go on to the priory, because John Goulden is recused from that. And so then we wouldn't be doing some shuffling here and there. Okay, all right, let's do minutes. Let me just think, are there any residents that would have waited to log into at 10:45? To do the minute? I think that that's unlikely and still within your authority to. Okay, to do that, yeah. And, oh, Nicholas, I was like, wow, he drove fast. And Caroline Vertonghen had comments, but she was just on. So I think, yeah, let's go to the minutes. What do you all say? Okay, good. So we're jumping to item number five, which is approval of the March 6 minutes. So we'll entertain discussion on those minutes or any changes that people would like to make. And we're in the habit of making, if you have substantive changes, but if they're just very minor or grammatical things, we don't spend too much time on them. Okay, great.
I had just a few things. There are 14 instances, I think, of femoral creek, which should be ephemeral. So the minutes is spelled with a F, but it should be EPH. On page 95, it was quoting the planning director about Glen Oaks. And it says she predicted the units would be clustered together. I think that's not exactly right. I would change it to, she stated the units could be clustered together. On page 100, Commissioner Krasinski suggested that the commission discuss the housing element by topic. That was actually Commissioner Targ who suggested that. I'm confused about my last one. If anyone else has something to add.
How about you, John?
Actually, no, I thought they were well done, too. The one thing that did come up from a discussion perspective is I thought we decided that we were no longer gonna have public changes and edits to them. I was just sorry to minutes.
We need to take public comment, and then it's through the commission's discretion whether to make those changes. So we kind of talked about not making little editing comments that didn't change the substance of things.
Was it in order to hear Caroline's comments?
Yes, when we're done with our comments. I had one comment, and I'm struggling to find it. And what do we, what if Nicholas has comments on the minutes? We're right now. I don't think so, mind, if the four of you review them. Okay, I guess.
Are you looking for stuff? You're slowing us down.
Sorry, I'm looking. Trying to go slow for Nicholas and, no, I'm looking for my change, which I can't find. So let me open it up to public comments. We know Caroline has one, but maybe others, too. Okay, Caroline, we're ready to take comments on the minutes. If you can, want to jump on again?
Great, thank you for giving that opportunity. So if you look at the minutes and halfway my paragraph, I mean, if you look at, if you listen to the recording, it's not actually what I said, but I don't want to give you extra work. But I really have a problem with halfway through where it says, "The fifth cycle Rena was reduced because the Association of Bay Area Governments, ABAQ, considered and understood the unique landscape of Portola Valley." That's not what I said. You can verify it with the recording. I said that it was Portola Valley Building Department at the time that reduced the fifth cycle Rena. And if you remember, they reduced it from 74 to 64. And the explanation is because they really understood the unique landscape and the constraints of Portola Valley. If you, if I can just give an explanation on the next sentence, the staff refused to share that information. The information regarding ABAQ is an inventory that is available. It's a huge file. It has several pages, but it shows all the affordable housing and all the housing that has been built in the Bay Area for the fifth cycle. And it should be, and I brought it up to the town council and the building department and your department, because it shows you how many units have been built and are not being used. So if the government really wants to mandate housing, we need to know why so much housing has been built and has not been used. And that was my comment. If you know, thank you.
Caroline, which page were you referring to? Do you know which red page it was on?
Yes, it's the draft minutes. It's page 89. I'm the first one who made an oral communication.
Okay, thanks.
And it's halfway through, the fifth cycle. But I'm concerned, you know, I sent an email to your, to the, to your official email to the town before 12 o'clock yesterday, and that you have not received it, is very concerning.
Great, thank you. Any other comments on the minutes from March 6? Let me close out the minutes then. Do you have a motion to accept these?
I'm moving to accept the minutes.
No. You either need to make, you either need to make a motion and approve them, or we need to wait for Nicholas. There's no in-between.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second?
With the changes that have been.
With your changes, with the commissioner changes.
I guess I'd like to add Caroline's change.
You, sorry, you can't. The commissioners can add the public's changes.
Yes.
We were just trying to be careful not to go back. Some months back, we had a lot of members of the public trying to correct their comments that were not substantive. And so the planning commission was taking a lot of time making corrections around things that didn't change the nature of the planning commission's discussion.
Interesting.
And so it's up to the planning commissioners then to capture those public comments and suggest the changes. So you're free to do so, but it would need to come from one of you.
Can I do that now? How do I do that?
You would do that by telling us what you want to change and then asking Commissioner Brothers and Goulden if they would accept that from the amendment.
Did you capture, I think it was this line about the fifth cycle Rena was reduced because the Association, because ABAQ considered and understood the unique landscape of Portola Valley.
Actually, your correction was that the building department changed it. Of course, the building department can't change ABAQ numbers, so.
Well, that's fine, but I guess the question is, that's what she said in her comment.
That's what I heard.
No, the minutes are recording her comments at the time, and it doesn't have to be correct. But if she said that it was the building department, which I think I believe that, and the minutes should reflect that.
If that's what you think she said, yeah. So instead of saying the staff, it says the building department. Is that the change?
I think so.
That's what it was.
This is why you can get into weirdness with too many public comments on minutes.
I thought it was, instead of ABAQ, it was supposed to be the planning department. Did she say the planning department?
Tonight, she said building department.
Building department.
So what we, what happened in the past is what we were trying to avoid is we ended up, our staff had to go back and listen to the video, and it would take like 20 minutes to make changes to something that wasn't substantive or change the nature of the planning commission's discussion. So that's, you know, what the issue was, is that, was that worth the time? Right, so if it's just changing the staff to the building department, that doesn't seem substantive enough to me to change. But if you heard something else, then we can entertain it.
Yeah, I think I didn't catch it.
I say we leave it the way it is. So we have a motion and a second right now. That's right, okay. So to adopt the minutes with the two changes, three changes, I'm sorry, from Commissioner Krasinski. Okay, so I think we should still do a roll call vote. Do we have to now that we're all here? No, I don't think we do. We didn't use to have to. We didn't use to. Okay, so you can just call all in favor, and I don't have to do the roll call. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All against? We're for to be there.
What about extensions?
Oh, but Nicholas is here now. Would you like to vote in favor of the minutes and the motion, against it, or abstain?
I will take item C. I will abstain.
I appreciate, yeah.
401. Great, Nicholas, we jumped to item five on the agenda to do minutes while you were in transit, because we wanted you to be here when we did item number one, which was rotation of the chair. I already said it once, but now that you're here, I'll say it again. We, when this, when I was made chair, the sort of normal rotation would have been you to be vice chair, but because you and I were both recused from Stanford Projects, we thought that wasn't a good idea. So we made John Goulden vice chair. Now that we're faced with picking a new chair, we could either pick John Goulden, because he has been vice chair, or we could pick you, because that would have been the normal rotation. Both systems could make sense.
I'm happy with either option. I'm happy to do it. I'm happy to pick this. I think you'd do a fine job.
I appreciate the confidence.
I would probably vote for John Goulden, just because he was vice chair, and then that feels normal. And then we made Nicholas vice chair. There were some meetings that we have where the chair and the vice chair participate with staff and town council, and so John was part of those. So I feel like that kind of makes sense. And I also think because Nicholas and I both have the same conflict, it's good to keep us not back to back in the rotation. I'm very flexible. I don't feel very strongly about that. Any other opinions? So then the action would be for someone to make a motion to nominate someone as the chair. And then nomination for vice chair, we can either do them separately or together. And then we would, we would want to take public comments before you have any kind of vote. Okay, good. And Commissioner Brothers, I heard that there's trouble hearing you over Zoom. If you could pull your mic a little closer.
Oh, my goodness. I've never complained to that before.
Okay, good. So entertain a motion to nominate John as chair and Nicholas as vice chair, if someone is so inclined.
So moved.
Hold second. Any discussion among the commissioners? Then I'd like to open it up to public comment on that motion. I see no hands in the schoolhouse. I see Dana Breen for a Zoom comment.
Am I unmuted?
Yes.
Okay, I looked back on chairdom, and I think Nicholas has not been chair since 2018. And I think it's important for the dialectic that we keep this thing mixed up, you know, and keep, keep different chairs. So I would actually, Nicholas, I would like to see you step up and do this, please. Thank you.
Any other comments? Let's see, Betsy Morganteller on Zoom.
How do you do, Chair? We'll miss you, and you've been a wonderful chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy.
You're welcome. And I hear the normal order of things, but in the normal of order of things, you and Nicholas both would not have faced the same conflict of interest, and Nicholas would not have, in a gentlemanly, lawyerly way, stepped aside. So I, in deference to the normal course of things, think that, that he has served the purpose in stepping aside and should be allowed to step forward again to serve. The right person for the right time, and John, I look forward to seeing you again soon, too. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And next, Kristy Corley?
Yes, I'd like to see Nicholas as chair and as always, giving the full two to three minutes to the public when we make comment. Thank you.
Great, any other comments from on Zoom or in the schoolhouse? I see no others, so we'll close public comments. Okay, so we have a motion on the table to vote on.
Nicholas, you haven't said anything.
You know, the idea of a, you know, thank you very much for the invitation. Almost check. I'm flattered to think that a lawyer would step aside. Gentlemen, I understand and appreciate. Here's the only item that I have in mind, and that is, I believe my term is up in December. And hard to know what the future brings. And I certainly am not making any announcements. But I can notice the convergence of time. And that may be the extent of my.
Any other thoughts or comments from commissioners?
When is Commissioner Goulden's term up, you know?
It's a while. It's a while. It got renewed sometime recently, so.
Okay, let's have a vote on the motion that's on the table. This has to be roll call, is that right? Yeah, it should be, because this dynamic is a little bit strange, right? We just want to make sure that we capture it from everyone's point of view. Okay, so the motion is for Commissioner Goulden to be the chair and Commissioner Targ to be the vice chair. So Commissioner Targ?
I am abstaining.
Commissioner Brothers?
Aye.
Commissioner Krasinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Copsell?
Aye.
Commissioner Goulden?
Aye.
Okay, so the motion passes. And so then Commissioner Goulden becomes the chair and Commissioner Targ becomes the vice chair. So we normally do this rotation live right now. So I need to move my chair. No, nobody needs to move. Okay. But Commissioner Goulden will now be the chair and take over the meeting. Great, okay.
There we go. So we're moving on to item two on the agenda. But I feel the need to announce that I have to recuse myself from item two, because it relates to the prior, and I live too close to the prior. So I believe then Nicholas will handle the rest of the meeting.
Well, I will handle the rest of the meeting, except to the extent that I'm going to be potentially leaving at about 9:00.
Then I'll run the meeting again.
Okay.
The Bob note.
All righty.
That's fine. Okay. You could make it a goal to try to finish before 9:00. Okay, and you won't be back, because we finished the minutes and did everything. Congratulations. Thank you. Okay.
All right, let's do a staff report.
So Jake has the staff report. We're going to be a little bit brief on the staff side, and then we will turn it over to the applicant team. And we did want to let folks know that three planning commissioners went on the site today for a site visit and a couple of neighbors as well. So we wanted to reflect that into the record. So please go ahead, Jake. Jake, you're muted.
Oh, jeez, I.
I'm having a little bit of technical difficulty on sharing the screen. Just give me a second. Can you see it okay there?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'm a little bit limited on the controls on my side. For some reason, when I share screens. It's pushing off a little bit of my other items into a part where I cannot click on. So. Bear with me as I may run into some issues with that throughout my presentation, but. Thank you so much. My name is Jake Garcia. I'm a consulting planner for the town. And thank you all for coming out to the site today. We had a very rainy and memorable visit, I'm sure. The item before you tonight is a follow up on that site visit. It's a request for a preliminary review for a new gym, a fitness center, an addition remodeled to an existing locker room. An addition remodel to an existing chapel and other projects for our forthcoming conditionally use permit amendment at the Woodside Priory School. At three oh two Portola Road. It's, the Woodside Priory School is a private college preparatory school for grades six through twelve. The campus is approximately fifty acres in size and is designated for institution land uses in the general plan. And its town residential estate zoning district. It is a conditional use governed by conditional use permit. Which was first approved in nineteen sixty eight and most recently amended in two thousand twenty one. An overall master plan map of the campus visually implements the development standards as detailed in the CUP language. And the approved map is shown here on your screen. The Priory is requesting amendments to the CUP and overall master plan map and has requested that the planning commission. First provide a preliminary review of the forthcoming development proposals to provide initial feedback. And guidance to the applicant team as they proceed with project designs and requests the planning commission to make those amendments to the existing CUP. In order for the proposed development proposals to move forward, a CUP amendment would need to be approved as the proposed projects are anticipated to. Exceed the maximum allowed floor area as allowed by the CUP. And after any formal CUP approval, each of these projects would be reviewed at least once more by the ASC for final architectural review and approval. The provided plans and associated information that you're reviewing today are conceptual at this time. And when final proposed plans are available, town staff will conduct a complete review for consistency with the town's municipal code. The design guidelines, the general plan and approve governing CUP. Prior to tonight's meeting, the ASC. Provided a conceptual design review of the forthcoming projects on February twenty seventh. And I will discuss their initial feedback in a later slide. And on your screen is a proposed conceptual overall master plan which identifies the forthcoming projects. Initially reviewed. By the ASC, but last week after. The planning commission staff report was drafted and prior to publication, the applicant informed the town of their revised plans. Staff has not yet been able to provide a complete review of the revised plans and scope of work prior to this meeting. However, since the planning commission meeting was already noticed, we proceeded with the applicant's request for preliminary review. Of the most up to date and forthcoming projects. And the revised changes provided to the town last week will be further explained by the applicant team in their presentation. On your screen is previously proposed site plan which identified a new gym circled in blue and a new fitness center circled in orange. These are two buildings. These two buildings have since been revised and combined and relocated. And, excuse me. There's the blue circle with the old location of the gym and the old location of the fitness center. And no changes have been made to the proposed locker room renovation, which is circled in red. The chapel renovation circled in yellow, the monastery renovation circled in green. New academic offices circled in purple and middle school playground circled in a lighter blue. And here's the revised overall master plan proposal most recently provided by the applicant team. And shows the redesign and relocation of the gym and fitness center to be one building adjacent to the existing track and field. The applicant team has conceptual architectural drawings for projects one through three on the following slides. Or and the following slides will go through the conceptual plans in a bit more detail. Conceptual plans for projects five through eight are not yet available but are included here for reference as their proposed project. That will be included in the CUP amendment and are to be further detailed at a later date. So here's the new location of the gymnasium lockers and fitness center adjacent to the track and field. Starting first with this gym, here are the elevations with the north elevation. Which would be open, open up inward to the campus and the south elevation which faces outward toward the track and field and Portola Road. And here's the west elevation which looks to the parking lot and Priory School Drive. No east elevation was provided at this time. Now, next is the locker room addition remodel. The area circled in red, the existing gym locker rooms are proposed to be renovated and includes a one thousand, one thousand three hundred and six square foot addition. The area of addition will allow for a new team, a new team room on the west end of the building and infill smaller areas of the building. So the building is more uniform in shape. On your screen in the red is the areas of addition and the corresponding elevations where the area of additions are planned to be. The building, the building is proposed to have non combustible exterior materials. Moving on to the chapel site plan, we have the chapel renovation in addition. The existing chapel is proposed to be renovated and expanded with a seven hundred and thirty eight square foot addition. And a seven hundred and fifty four square foot office building proposed adjacent to the chapel for the ministry offices. And here are the elevations for the proposed chapel addition. Again, staff would like to highlight that the planning commission or prior to the planning commission. The ASC reviewed conceptual designs on February twenty seventh. However, they reviewed a previous iteration of the proposed projects that included a new gym. In a separate fitness, fitness center facility on the western end of the project site and as shown on your screen. Their feedback was specific to the initial designs of the new gym. Advising the applicant team to take into consideration potential light spill from the then proposed clear story windows. They had also advised the applicant team to work with the conservation committee on proposed tree removals and planting plans that may be associated with the projects forthcoming. Just wanted to highlight again to the public that a previous iteration of this plan was reviewed by the ASC and. A new iteration of the gym is being proposed tonight before the planning commission. This shot slide shows the public noticing conducted and notice was sent to all property owners within one thousand square feet. I'm sorry, within one thousand feet radius of the project site on February seventeenth for the ASC meeting and again on April twenty first. For today's site visit and planning commission meeting. No public, no public comment has been received prior to this meeting. And the ASC may wish to consider the forthcoming projects with respect to general design and location of buildings. As well as required findings of necessary approval, necessary to approval of the conditional use permit. As identified and outlined in the staff report. And planning commission, we wish to provide other initial feedback or direction to the applicant team. And the applicant team may have questions specific for the planning commission tonight. This is the end of the staff presentation. Both staff and the applicant team are available for any questions by the ASC. Thank you.
Are there questions?
Do you have questions now or?
Yeah, clarification specifically for staff because the applicant will have a whole present.
Right. And, and it could be questions about what was in the packet, right?
Yes.
On, on table one. Which is on beginning on page. Six about, you know, basically the proposed increase in max floor area. I, I noticed that. The impervious, max impervious surface is not in this table. Would, would that be expected to increase as well or not?
The conceptual plans don't detail the forthcoming impervious surface totals. My understanding is that some of these projects may have an overall decrease in impervious surface while others may have an overall increase. I would look to the applicant team to specify further for their proposed plans.
Another question that I had was. For the considerations which are enumerated from one to seven. And number seven was. Has a clause about a majority of the clientele of the proposed use will come from the town and its spheres of influence. I'm just wondering how, how to interpret that, given that, you know, it's not a majority of the clientele. That come from the town as far as I understand.
So the way that this one has been interpreted in the past is, you know, the Priory has existed since before town incorporation. They've been governed by a CUP. And this finding applies to some projects but not others. And historically, what's been done for the Priory is that they include in their annual report. The number of local Portola Valley students that are attending. And then oftentimes in the annual report discussion, there's some question, there's consideration to that. And oftentimes the planning commission will encourage Priory to continue to increase that number. And so that's the way it's been handled in the last five years or so.
One more. So on page fourteen, which is I think in the existing CUP. There's a section on community, community use of athletic facilities. And so I'm just wondering like at a high level, how? What, what, what is the actual policy there? How would that apply to the new athletic facilities?
Um, this goes, this goes back a long ways in terms of the. Priory making their facilities available. And so I don't know, Jake, did you look into this specifically for this project yet?
Uh, yeah, upon initial review of the plans that we had received and were reviewed by the ASC. The joint use agreement covers a number of the athletic facilities on site, but not all of them. And in the initial designs, there were no conflict with the. The joint use agreement that exists today and what was being proposed, meaning that there were no buildings proposed. In place of any of those existing facilities that are being shared as a community use. I think with the, the most recent plan iteration, we would need to review that once more just to verify that that information is still true. But it is referring to a joint use agreement of many of the various. Athletic facilities on site, for example, the, the four tennis courts up in the northeast corner of the site and the Gambetta Gym have. Some sort of agreement that allows for community use.
The last one that you mentioned, is that the existing basketball gym?
Yes, correct.
That's all.
So, and when we get to discussion for newer commissioners, one of the things that we staff like to hear from you when we do the very early conceptual reviews. Are what are your questions that you want us to be able to answer in future reports? And so this is exactly the kind of stuff that we're looking for. So we, we are looking to you to flag the kinds of things that you'll need to consider when you're ultimately making a decision.
I, I may have one question now with that clarification, Laura. Even after the tour today, I'm not a hundred percent certain what you're proposing. We had the documents and then you made this last minute change. So imagine Carter, you will address that. You don't need to specifically answer it, but you don't. I have that question.
So I guess there's a couple of questions. One is. It sounds like not all of the. Not, not all of the drawings have been resubmitted. There's still gaps in. In the submissions, is that correct?
Yes, we have conceptual plans for some aspects of the project, but we don't have conceptual plans for other aspects.
How do we, is it material that we don't know how the buildings will relate to one another? At this point in its own sense. Until you have a totality of the project and the plumbing. Is there a right way to think about this?
Um, my suggestion would be to hear the applicant's presentation first and then we can handle it in discussion. They, the interest that they expressed to me was getting in front of the ASCC and the planning commission early. So that we could talk about their, so we could talk about the overall plan for amending their CUP and think about phasing. And what parts of the project they may want to do when. That they can decide how to invest their time and resources and actually drawing those plans over time. So some of those things might not come until later, but might be approved by the planning commission and in the form of the master plan. So I think the planning commission will ultimately definitely need to know where on the site. Those buildings would go, do you know what I mean? And reasonable expectations of the footprint and what might be included. With the very final designs being reviewed by ASCC. But I certainly am very interested in the planning commission's, you know, early feedback on this so that we can talk through what those steps are.
But the approval of the last CUP. Amendment in the end of two thousand and one. There was. An agreement that there were going to be a. Noise. Plan and a traffic plan. That was going to be included and it was that agreement that allowed the consensus to be formed. I didn't see reference to a noise plan and I saw. Reference to a traffic plan. That would be developed. As a mitigation in the event there were complaints. Has there been a noise plan and a traffic plan that's been developed as? Was. Part of the. The two thousand and one and five, two thousand and twenty one amendment. And I ask that in part because I don't know how we, if it isn't. And if we have a CUP that's not in compliance, then we need to see the. Traffic plan and the noise plan included. But if I'm missing the fact that there is a traffic plan and it comes now and here, then that issue is resolved. You let me know how that.
Um, so attachment number ten is the annual report from June of two thousand twenty two. So that's what we'd use to evaluate the compliance and then the traffic monitoring report. From fall of two thousand twenty two, that's also attached. And so, you know.
That's the same specifically in our. In our approval. There was a. Agreement. That we were going to have a traffic plan. And a noise. And. Mission and planning building director Russell discussed the language of how to incorporate the traffic management plan into finding three. Vice Chair Coxo mentioned that her concern with small changes lead to big outcomes. And similarly. Vice Chair Coxo recommended the traffic management plan be incorporated in finding three. And the planning and building director Russell said that the noise management plan should be included in finding four. So my question is, where is the traffic management plan and the noise management plan? And if we don't have one. Can we approve a CUP? Because it looks like these are supposed to be on, so they're supposed to be included and developed. I'm not seeing.
Uh, I don't think you can approve a CUP amendment without making a reasonable determination that they're in compliance with their CUP. making a reasonable determination that they're in compliance with their CUP. I don't know if others know the answers specifically to the question. I can answer a lot of questions about the housing element. If you if you want to ask me those, but I'm going to defer to Jake if he knows the answer to that question.
If you don't, we're going to be coming back to you as well.
Oh, yeah, we'll be here numerous times talking about this project.
Excellent. Let's figure out what the answer is to the traffic plan.
Great.
So as mentioned, the attachment ten and eleven of the staff report include the update for traffic monitoring as well as the annual report does provide some context to where in the process of monitoring noise and traffic that the school is currently in. This annual report comes out by the end of June of each year. So the report that we're basing much of our information off is the two thousand and twenty two report with the two thousand and twenty three report to be forthcoming. If you see in that annual report, noise monitoring began and after the first semester. So my understanding is that it's currently being collected, the data for that monitoring report. And I asked the applicant team to provide any updates that they may have on the progress of that. And and I do I do believe that we'll be seeing more information as the next annual report comes out and as we continue to look at the parameters of these forthcoming amendments to the CUP.
That sounds great. That's a monitoring plan which is different than the traffic management plan, the noise management plan. Now, I I just bring your attention to the minutes which are included in February two, two thousand and twenty two, that page one oh one. Just for convenience. There's a review of how we got to the traffic management plan and those games. If there are no other comments or questions, staff, why don't we turn it over to the applicant?
I'm sorry, can we pause? Jake, can you hear on that microphone? I just want to make sure all of our systems are working tonight.
The characters on the end are a bit faint, but but understandable.
But can you hear Carter?
Oh, no. I cannot.
And here's Carter.
Loud and clear.
Thank you. Thanks. Thanks for the time today. We're grateful to be with you to help us think about how we can continue to develop priory in ways that make sense for us, but also certainly support the town. You know, we 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 had a wonderful walk around campus wet. My my socks are still wet, actually, just from the from the walk around today. But but wonderful to just see the campus a little bit through through your eyes. And we were able to, I think, unpack a little bit about what we're what we're trying to do. Jake did a great job of of going through the details of the projects and Carter will certainly, you know, unpack them, you know, even further. I think for us, you know, we we are grateful that we have our conditional use permit and and we're thrilled with the size of priory, who we are and what we are. And really, that's helps define that is help that is defined partially by our values, right? And and our mission, which is is so critical to who we are. We think what we're what we're proposing here, what we're talking about, and hopefully working with you, helps us bring that mission to life. It 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 updates some of the the current facilities and structures that we have. It really is from a master plan that was was developed eighteen years ago when when, you know, only some of our seniors were alive and and so much has shifted and changed in those last eighteen years. You know, we certainly want to be in compliance with our our conditional use permit and and happy to talk about traffic pattern and noise monitoring and and decisions on that. But but we also want to make sure that our facilities, you know, currently meet the needs and the realities of our students. And and we've seen so many things different in the last eighteen years, but certainly in the last, you know, three or four too. So so that was what was so exciting for us to have you on campus and kind of see, you know, some of the things, you know, we're 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 talking about and hopefully addressing. Again, we we believe that we are part of the town. We we believe that we're an important piece of the fabric. We certainly benefit tremendously, you know, from the town. I think the town impacts and influences us. And then I think the priory has has a real place, you know, in this town too. So what we do, we want to do in concert, you know, with the town. And we want to make it part of the town and we want to be exemplars, you know, in the town. So so we're hopeful that together, as we look at these projects and think them through, we can really develop something that's obviously important to priory, but also, you know, helps out helps out our town. So I'll let Carter kind of walk through things and then we'll kind of tag team, you know, different questions, but I'll let Carter kind of walk through more details.
Great. Thank you so much. You know, necklace of this is intentionally not a complete application. We're not trying to get review, you know, of all the things that we know we're going to have to do. What we're trying to do with, you know, with tonight's meeting is to visit onsite, show you some of the things we're thinking about. And use the planning commission's intelligence and abilities to help guide us, you know, through what is potentially a pretty big undertaking with the condition used. But then also bifurcating, you know, some of those, you know, simple or smaller things, you know, that we may or may not have, you know, floor area available within the existing conditions to met. But they still make good sense, you know, to try to try to pursue. So let me just share the suggestions is. So this is, let's see, it's gonna come someday. So so this is, you know, a a version, you know, of, you know, the the overall, you know, site plan, you know, of the of the priory. The elements, you know, in brown are all things that have been done. The elements, you know, in yellow are things that have been approved but haven't been done. The buildings that are, you know, in kind of the pink speckles are buildings that we're intending to to renovate, you know, and do additions. And then the red are elements that are additions. The so the three that we visited today were the expansion of the chapel and the campus ministries addition. The existing locker rooms and team rooms associated with, you know, the pool area and the gym. And what we're currently proposing, you know, as a new gym, you know, and fitness facility. You know, in kind of in in the area that is created alongside the track. These these projects are the things that are highest on the list of things that the prior wants to pursue. There's, you know, a couple others that are high on the list, but, you know, are not likely, you know, to be of much interest. There's a middle school playground where we'd be taking out, you know, a existing cul-de-sac fire truck turnaround that is no longer, you know, necessary or makes sense. And then there's a couple of things, you know, on the plan that we're we're mentioning in the connection of the dorms and a new little office building on Chilling Square that would need for it. Now, but we, as we started to talk about the condition, this permit with staff, you know, staff challenged us to, you know, to add up the things that we might want to do in the next fifteen, twenty years. And since the last, you know, essentially facilities master plan, you know, has lasted most of eighteen without any significant amendment. And the last, you know, project that we're mentioning only because, you know, it makes sense to talk about all the things that we're thinking, you know, is a renovation and adaptive reuse of one of the oldest buildings on campus, the monastery. So the elements in in orange are the things that are of the highest and most interest, you know, to to the prior. The first being, you know, the chapel, you know, is you know, Jake mentioned, is a seven hundred and thirty eight square foot addition to the chapel. Half on one side and half on the other, you know, and another seven hundred and fifty square foot campus ministry. It's hidden. It's well suited. Those that visited, I think, you know, feel it's pretty, you know, benign. But we don't really have floor available for. We have five thousand square feet of athletic floor area and about seven thousand square feet of residential area that I think we should, you know, we should be able to borrow from to do these kinds of things. But officially, you know, they're kept. This is neither academic nor athletic nor residential at the chapel. But it really makes sense to do, you know, the building is old, you know, it's got some deferred maintenance issues. And and we're also trying to in increase the seating capacity so that we can end up not having to send a couple classes to a different place and be on Zoom, you know, for the week of chapter. The other project that, you know, is relative, you know, relatively benign is, you know, the renovation of the existing locker rooms adjacent to the pool, pool and the gym. The original locker rooms were built, designed and built for boys. When prior was a boys, you know, as girls were, as this campus became coed, a girl's locker room is added, and it's been probably substandard since the day it was built. Right now, there are separate buildings. There's a little T shaped, you know, bit of space of two hundred square feet or so, you know, that we want to connect the two buildings and then, you know, expand, you know, the girls locker rooms so that it can actually make sense. During the the site meeting, we went through and did a pretty good job of explaining why. You know, the campus has has evolved. Get into that in just a minute about about what's happened over time. But, you know, the the need for, you know, parity between the sexes and also being able to deal with privacy, you know, real privacy, you know, in locker rooms so that you can have, you know, private showers and private changing areas. And so you don't end up in in any position in the locker room, you know, not being private, you know, is part of what motivates us. The other one is is that right now there's just one teamer. You know, and, you know, if you've got two teams playing, you know, it it really is a disadvantage to one or the other, you know, to not be able to have meeting space. Or if you have, you know, a boys team and a girls team, you know, needing a space, you know, it just needs to have parity. The last major project, you know, is is one that, now, as Jake mentioned, we had been designing it in this area of the campus. We designed it principally because, you know, in that area, because it was essentially invisible. It was adjacent to the existing athletic facilities. It was going to be hard, but, you know, it kind of made sense. The priory, you know, with some advice from, you know, some of the trustees challenged us, you know, for why is it there? You know, why wouldn't you put it someplace else, you know? And the other thing that happened coincidentally is that we're in discussions with contractors, you know, about what the likely construction of that project. And that project necessitated digging into the hill and and doing a lot of, you know, foundation waterproofing, you know, and multiple ways. And as we started to look at those cost estimates, you know, we were seeing, you know, a consequential cost of three to four additional million dollars, you know. And if that building had actually been built on ground, it was already. So prior challenge is to go back and look at some of the planning processes that we did, you know, all the way back in nineteen ninety nine. And in nineteen ninety nine and two thousand, this area was already identified as a really good area for something important. And that's something important. We didn't know what it needed to be, but we as the design architects and the landscape architects and the planners, you know, all felt that that was a very important position. And that we should do something. The prior leadership leadership at the time decided to not consider putting anything in that position because they were concerned about the visibility. And I still think it's a, you know, it's a concern about visibility. However, you know, things have shifted, things have changed. The priory is not the same school that it was. The planning process that, you know, that this site, you know, got thrown out during, you know, the priory was really only just starting to recover, you know, from nearly closing, you know, in the eighties. The shift, you know, to a coed school made a significant difference. And and there's also been some really significant, you know, demographic changes, socioeconomic changes that now makes the priory a very sought after, you know, school to go to. And today, with, you know, changes and, you know, with Title IX, leading sex parity, sport parity, real accessibility, dealing with general neutral facilities and looking at the high potential expenditure that the prior is going to go to, you know, to to build something in that location, in any location. Doing something that was iconic and transformative as every great school, you know, that we've all potentially attended, you know, there are some iconic and transformative buildings. And we see this important position, you know, with a building such as this, you know, that can start to bring together, you know, all of the values that the priory has, you know, about community and hospitality and individuality and those things that make, you know, the priory a really special place. We felt that you know, coming to you early, you know, when this design is still a baby, you know, to get your input really made sense. I'm sorry that it wasn't thought about before we went to the ASC. I think I want to go back to the ASC and revisit that because I do think this is a site that that can handle, you know, a building like this. It's positioned, you know, eight, you know, to sixteen feet below Portola Road. I think, you know, gives it a significant advantage. The height of the building isn't going to feel tall. The roadway, you know, at the school. The roadway at the school up here is seventeen feet, you know. is seventeen feet, you know, a- above, you know, the, the track well, you know, which is essentially the elevation that, that the gym is going to be at. You know, and with that, you know, with our, the, the majority of that building, except for the roof, you know, of the, of the gym, you know, is going to be below that. You know, as I mentioned, you know, during our site meeting, that this area was cut out sometime in the sixties or seventies, you know, to, to increase, you know, the, the size of, of this field. At that time, they built a small, you know, baseball diamond, softball diamond. And that softball diamond doesn't have a, you know, an outfield anymore now that the track is there. So what we're hoping for is, you know, is in, input, you know, related to those things. I can get into more details, you know, the questions, uh, what I wanted to do now is I should share some thoughts about pro- process. So the theme of, of where I think, I, I'm hoping that we think about, you know, the priori is about, you know, its evolution, you know, since its beginning, you know, in the fifties. I've got some, you know, some aerial photographs, you know, to show kind of the evolution, you know, and the evolution both in buildings, but al- also in the landscape. Uh, the other thing that I want us to be mindful for with, what mindful about? You know, is that the priori has evolved, you know, since a, a little bitty, you know, monastic school for boys, you know, to, to the important institution in, in our town. So this is what the site looked like, you know, in nineteen forty-eight. There, there was, you know, a little horse track and there were orchards, orchards and hayfields. This was, there's one, one significant tree.
Could you orient me on this? Where's Portola Road?
Yes, let me draw. So, you know, the brown line is Portola. The farmer's house is right there. So thi- this is what the property looked like about the time, you know, the, the priori bought the property. They bought the property in about nineteen fifty-six, opening the school in fifty-seven. So it, it, it was, you know, a pretty wide open space, you know, including, you know, the, this, this, the hillside that now is, you know, is the location that we're, you know, tr- trying to place the, you know, the gym. That hillside was a continuous hillside, you know, at that time. You know, and so that's the area, you know, that, to me, it's clear was excavated and that material was, was moved over to this side of the site. You know, as we get anecdotal, you know, reports from, you know, our, our elderly monks, that that was a really wet kind of pond year. This is what the site looked like in nineteen ninety-one. So very much like it does today. Majority of the buildings, you know, and the improvements, you know, were already there, you know, in ninety-one. Go fast through this because it really, you know, it just kind of shows the evolution. But the evol- the evolution doesn't, doesn't in any really big way, you know, ch- change the site. So, you know, in two thousand and sixteen, you know, there was the biggest material change, you know, from a public standpoint. It was the addition of, of the red track and, and the turf field. Uh, until that point, almost none of the site was ever seen, you know, until, you know, the ASC, you know, in their wisdom, actually asked that a lot of the screaming trees be removed along Portola Road to actually open that vista. The priori was extraordinarily anxious, you know, about that domain. But had, you know, the strong desire to actually have the field and, and have the track so they could fitulate and work through with the conservation committee to do an enormous amount of, of screen plant, you know, removal along Portola Road. Since then, as I mentioned during the site visit, I've gotten nothing but enormous confidence, you know, about the shift, you know, in opening up that vista so, so that people could see the track, you know, and understand that there's a great school. So this is, you know, a comparison of, you know, where the priori started and what they've done. They've been great stewards of the land, you know, they planted every tree that's on that side. So clearly, you know, the evolution has been there, they've done a great job, you know, with the town, some of it before. So with the existing, you know, conditions of approval, you know, to me, I wanted to, you know, to separate those, you know, into a pile that, you know, you can measure and a pile that is really about, you know, how the priori is, is taking care of itself. And, you know, for this, I separated them into kind of numeric measures and behavioral, you know, conditions. And, you know, as I looked, you know, at the thirty-four conditions of approval, you know, the first one just, you know, actually is a description of the property, which isn't really a condition. But in, but condition three and four actually are really the only ones that are talking about numeric standards. The first, you know, one being number three is about the number of students, the number of teachers, you know, and the number of staff. That condition was adjusted in a really material way, you know, in two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, in twenty-one, and we're net, we're not planning on changing. And there's nothing about what, you know, any of these, you know, eight or nine projects, you know, are intended, you know, or will necessitate, you know, a, a change in those numbers. The next one, you know, is about building area, impervious surface and parking. And this condition, you know, was the last time it was adjusted in any material, in a big material way, uh, was in two thousand and five, eighteen years ago. I think it was really fortunate, you know, that the planning commission, the priori had the foresight, you know, during that time to actually look forward and, and see the, you know, things that could potentially be done. You know, at that point, you know, the school didn't have a performing agency, it does now. It, it didn't have, you know, significant specialized, you know, music program classrooms. It, you know, didn't have, you know, the Benedictine classrooms. You know, what they were, you know, those classrooms were a bunch of little portable buildings, it was often. And they didn't have, you know, the, the stream building, you know, which started out as a STEM building and then became a steam building and now is a stream building, you know, so that you get science tech, you know. So, so you, you collect all of the sciences, you know, all of the arts and all of the engineering, you know, in, into one building. Those are things that evolved over time. So it brings me to, you know, all of the other conditions, you know, with five through thirty-four, you know, that, as we look at them, are behavior, you know, it's about how the, you know, the priori behaves, how they manage, you know, their students, staff, the landscaping, you know, a- all of, you know, these, these other things. And as we looked at those conditions, we don't see that anything that we're doing actually changes any of those conditions. Because the, the reason that those conditions were placed, you know, on the conditional use permit, you know, was to help control the behavior of the priori. You know, so the, the noise monitor, whether we did a no- noise plan or not, I know that there's been noise monitoring because, you know, you, you, you know, the priori cares about it a lot, you know, and wants to make sure that they're doing it. Included in this, you know, was neighborhood communications, you know, so every time there's even a small event, you know, the, the priori sends out a blast, you know, to all of these people within a thousand-foot radius, you know, that there's potentially something going on, you know, including tonight. The traffic, you know, is something the priori took, you know, took on wholeheartedly, you know, after the, the act, you know, the, the approval, you know, in two thousand and one. They actually changed the way circulation hap- happens on site, you know, making, you know, the, the main entrance, you know, at Dambetta Lane, you know, so that that queuing, you know, can happen on site, you know, and not, you know, not have to do a button hook turn, you know, on campus. And I know Patrick's pretty proud of it, you know, it, it really has worked for him. And there's, there's probably a nuance to that, you know, that we'd like to, you know, that we talked about on site, you know, do- doing a cutoff, you know, so that traffic wouldn't have to go all the way through campus and everything. But all of these conditions, you know, uh, have to do with monitoring, mitigation measures, you know, uh, legal indemnity, a lot of things that, uh, whether there's another building or not, doesn't really matter. So what we're hoping for and what we see as, as the needs, you know, in condition approved, conditional, in the conditional use permit, you know, is a need for some expansion, you know, of the for area. And that's to attend to shortfalls in, in our planning effort from two thousand and five, needs to modernize and upgrade, you know, aging buildings and make them structurally safe. Uh, the best necessity for ADX accessibility. And we've got changes in demographics, academics, you know, socioeconomic, you know, necessity and parity for sexes, gender-neutral facilities and shifts in competitive environment and shifts in technology. So those are the things that we need additional for. Uh, the additional impervious surface is fairly similar, similar, uh, and, you know, it really has to do with servicing those buildings in, in a better way. And the need for additional parking, it isn't about additional, need for additional parking spaces. It's a need for additional parking, kind of where it's easier to get to, you know, for parents, grandparents, and people with, people with disabilities. There's also, you know, uh, some new requirements, you know, for E- EV, you know, charging spaces that can't be used by other kind of. This is the zoning comparison that I mentioned, you know, during our, our site meeting. And what this table does what this table does is look at all of the zoning districts and all of, you know, their allowable for areas, you know, as percentages of the site and also the impervious surface and the totals. It's interesting to, to look at, you know, that, you know, in the smallest zoning district, you know, the for area allowed is, you know, over forty percent of the site. And in the largest, you know, district, you know, it's less than three percent of the site. The priori, you know, is, you know, wholly within the one acre zoning district. And if we use the, the twelve point eight percent, you know, which is allowed, you know, inside the one acre zoning district, the total allowable for area for the fifty acres, you know, would be in excess of sixty-five thousand square feet. The current CUP has a current limit of two hundred and five thousand, which, you know, provi- you know, if you use that metric, you know, as a way of judging where the priori, you know, how to judge how much for area makes sense, that gives, you know, uh, about sixty thousand square feet of potential. The use permit so far has only been for what the priori has asked, you know, r- rather than looking for, you know, looking for some kind of, you know, zoning-based limit because it's a conditional use permit. And I did this table, you know, to educate myself, uh, educate the priori and also to, you know, help you all, you know, see, you know, that what we're, what we may be asking for probably isn't that far out along. So in summary, uh, you know, as I mentioned on site, you know, and Patrick too, you know, we've got some minor additions and renovations, you know, that we'd like to be able to handle, you know, in a way that, you know, doesn't cause us a bunch of brain damage or you. We've got, you know, a significant addition and a new building, you know, that, you know, needs to respond to some changes, you know, in the world. And, and changes in the way, you know, the, the priori needs to operate since it's a, essentially a fifty-fifty, you know, of a boys' and girls' school. So the questions that we, we have, you know, is do our current, you know, projects appear compatible with the use? And could, can we go directly to the ASC with some, some way that, that you and the planning staff and, and we can all agree? Uh, the next question is, is, you know, do you concur that the projects, you know, you know, only require adjustment to condition four? Because if we could focus on, you know, that condition, you know, versus all of the other, you know, minutia, because the other things, you know, the priori still has to comply with, you know, they still have to limit, you know, the off-site impact, they can't have noise, you know, a- a- all of those, you know, things that, you know, are about, you know, the normal operation, you know, these things are going to, you know, going to continue to do because the, the biggest gating item on what the impact of the school is, you know, you already dealt with in two thousand and twenty-one, you know, with the, the population. And the last question is, is with our major project being, you know, the gym and fitness, you know, facility, you know, kind of in the, in the brach of the site created by the, the hill coming down, you know, and the track, you know, raise concerns and, and it should. And what are those concerns, you know, so that we can work on them today? And that's, that's really why we're here. Sorry for being so long.
Maybe one thing, um, at the site visit, you described the ideas about connecting the road. Uh, maybe you could review that for the benefit of the public and commission.
So yeah, a- as part of, you know, understanding the traffic, the school has changed the entrance and, and the traffic that. So it flows through the site like that, which, which has, has worked really well, you know, to take, you know, tr- traffic away from the street.
One, just for some context, right, as you, you may know, or you may remember, we used to all, entering the, coming out, that would be entry and exit way for all traffic in, part of the drive, kind of a button hook that people would do, you know, kind of, um, pour that big S curve, um, right in there and then they'll go back out. So we just received some tremendous bottlenecks and was right, I mean, it, it, I mean, I run there sometimes and then it is dicey if you're coming back and there's a car trying to turn in and out. So, um, this, this new traffic plan that we've adopted. So, um, this, this new traffic plan that we've adopted, um, has really mitigated all of that and, and allowed for, you know, much safer entry and exit, and really a better period to drop off and, and pick up. The only people that come in for the blue, for the arrowways are the seniors that park, um, in that fields, uh, in that parking space, right, the parking spaces right by, um, the field where Carter just, you know, there's no throughway to the campus. So changing it really has made a part, so that's what our traffic.
And, uh, the, the part that Bonnie was alluding to is what we'd like to do is take the major, you know, tra- traffic across, you know, below the dorms. This, this is a, this is a portion of the CUP that had been there until the two thousand one amendment.
Two thousand twenty-one.
Twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one, thank you.
Well, notice it's going through, taking Dambetta Lane all the way through the campus has created some other conflict zones. The, the main drop-off and throughway is the thoroughfare between our middle school and upper school, uh, right outside the dining hall. So now, in that kind of key time when most students are getting here and trying to get to class, you know, they're, they're going in between parts. We mitigate it because we have someone there every day, and we would still have someone there for drop-off and pickup, but just to limit those conflict zones would be more beneficial.
So th- this is an element, getting this road back, you know, on, on the plan, you know, that was originally approved in two thousand five, you know, is something that we'd like to get your input on, and it is something that we'd probably like to implement sooner than later. You know, because it will do, do the things that the current plan, you know, does, you know, in, in, you know, creating a one-way, you know, essentially a one-way pickup and drop-off line. And, but also then eliminate, you know, the in- internal campus conflicts.
I do have a question, I know you're at a very preliminary stage here, but what's your, um, what's your kind of timeline on all of this? And where do you see this going? And when might we see this again, just in rough figures?
it wouldn't bother us, you know, to continue to return, you know, on a preliminary basis, you know, to, you know, to gradually, you know, develop the design. I don't think it's, we don't see it as necessary to, to solve all the problem immediately, you know, in the absence of, of planning conditions. I think that, you know, we want to identify, you know, the, the big issues, you know, early, you know, so that we can attend to them, but we could come back, you know, once a month, you know, with, you know, with the updates, you know, on the project, you know, and, and continue to do those things. Uh, the chapel, you know, and the locker rooms, you know, are things that are long overdue, you know, and we'd like to see a way to be able to do those, kind of in this season. And, and so, you know, some of the things that we're, you know, we've been thinking about to ourselves, is there a way, you know, to provide guidance to staff, you know, on the out, on the allocation, you know, of, you know, the four, the twelve thousand square feet of floor area that hasn't been used, utilized yet? A lot of that has, you know, was set aside for housing. Currently, you know, the, the prairie is, is kind of well situated with the housing that they have. Isn't in, in need of a lot of housing right, right now. And there, there is, you know, over five thousand square feet of athletic facility space, you know, that hasn't been utilized yet. So if we could borrow from either or, uh, the amount that we need for the chapel project, you know, and the existing locker room project, you know, is, you know, probably in the, in the neighborhood of, you know, of less than three thousand square feet, you know. So I know this meeting, you know, wasn't agendized for action, really to, to share ideas and talk about, but that's, that's where we're at. The, the fitness facility has a lot of pent-up demand, you know, amongst, you know, donors, students, parents, alumni, benefactors, all kinds of people would, would be, you know, ecstatic, you know, if we could somehow start building it tomorrow. But those are the three things that we need.
I guess, I guess the, I guess the other way to look at it is, what, what would you, you know, you've seen our place, right? You've, you've seen the chapel, right? You've seen the, the existing locker rooms. What would you need to see from us, uh, in order to help us, um, get that project entitled so that we could, um, you know, pursue it in ways that would, we could fund it, and then we could, you know, adequately draw it with ASCC, and then we could get the appropriate builders going. What would be, what would, what do you need for that? And then I guess the corral areas, you think about that larger project, uh, the new, the new gym and fitness center locker rooms, you know, what are some of the key concerns that we can, again, start mitigating those as we, as we kind of go through our, our process? But the smaller ones, I think, are the ones that we see real need and real value, and I'm just curious what your, what your thoughts on that are.
And we're not to discussion point, right? Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, my question really went to where you are in terms of being ready to start construction, because you hadn't given us any schedule information at all, so I think that.
Okay, uh, let, let me answer that, Linda. On the chapel, we're finishing construction documents right now. So if, if we had, you know, had our, our way clear to understanding how we're going to get the floor area for it, you know, we would be ready to build, ready to be submitting for building permit, you know, in four to six weeks. Uh, the locker room is quite similar. We've got some delays there because, you know, we've got to move a PGME transform as part of it, and other parts of it, you know, we could do almost immediately. We need to break that project into bits, you know, because, you know, we need to still have functional locker rooms, you know, when, when school is in session.
Next question, um, from director, and that is, would you see any issue with breaking up, uh, let's say, comprehensive modification to the CUP into different pieces? And specifically whether there's a CEQA issue?
We've talked about it quite a bit, um, and we haven't reached a final conclusion. We advised them, you know, at first that we thought we needed to take all of this forward together so we didn't have any CEQA segmentation issues. But I also told them that we could come to the planning commission for this discussion and just get a conversation going, and then we would revisit that, um, based on the, the feedback from the planning commission. From a, kind of a logical point of view, um, it makes sense to me that they could borrow floor area from one category to another. Those categories are pretty outdated now compared to how the campus has evolved. Um, so from a logical point of view, the locker rooms in the chapel, to me, don't seem like a big deal, nor do they seem like a big deal under CEQA. Um, but we want to be very thoughtful about the segmentation, you know, potential issues, um, since, you know, that one new, larger building, you know, has to have appropriate CEQA review. So we're still in exploratory phase.
I guess it goes to, in a certain sense, the first question that I, substantive question that I had there is, what are we doing here when we only got two buildings? And how do we think about the development overall as a whole? And if we're now looking at this as a, well, actually, we're only thinking about these two buildings now, and that's what we want to do right now, and then we'll go and do something else later, I understand why you're only doing two of the buildings forward. I would go back and it would be really important for me to understand from the ASCC's perspective what it would mean to look only at two of the buildings at the time, from, as opposed to the project as a whole. And from a, from a, what, what do I know about design? But, so what, what am I, what am I thinking about? Uh, I've got something in fan view, and I want to see the verticals, and what, what it means from an aesthetic standpoint, I'd like to know. For example, it looks like there's been an increase in, attend, uh, an increase in student population of about fifteen percent over the last, maybe a little less, over the last three years. And how much of what we're building out is responsive to the increase in population? How I should think about that? Whether a, where are we now? We're at forty plus. I lost my numbers. what is our total attendance? Here it is. Total attendance is, uh, four fifty-two. So it's, uh, broken out from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. It's given as, uh, forty-four boarders and four hundred and eight, uh, day students for a total of four hundred and fifty-two.
That's not accurate.
Hey, hey, then that, whatever's in the, that report isn't, either, I'm not understanding.
Which, which page are you looking at?
I'm looking at page sixty-two. There's forty-four and four oh eight. But if that's not right, then that's a big deal. Because in the previous assessment, the ADA was thought to be ninety-three percent of total enrollment, which would put us pretty significantly over totals.
I, I don't, I don't know what you're looking.
So I'm looking at, I'm looking at, uh, condition three maximum enrollment based on average.
Average, average daily attendance.
Right, so now I'm looking at the bold, uh, two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two. Carter, what do you see in the, in that row?
Orders forty-four.
Right?
Thirty-four-eight.
Right?
Four hundred and eight.
Four hundred and eight, so what's the?
I haven't, the average daily attendance.
Right, hold on, but so what's the total of that? Four hundred and fifty-two, right? But is that correct or not? So if that's correct, and previously, uh, it was stated, sir, that there was, uh, on average, it was like ninety-two to ninety-three percent total equals ADA.
But, yeah, but the, the allowance, the max allowed is sixty and four thirty-five, right, for the, and an average daily attendance of, of four. And so, four thirty-five and sixty, right?
So then if, but that's for the day students, for the actual number of enrollment, but also the ADA counts as well. And if you go back and look at the, uh, planning commission minutes, you'll see that both numbers are caps, are regulatory numbers. So the question they have is, where are we? And are we in compliance or not in compliance? Is the increase in population what's driving?
No.
We, what's, is increase in population what's driving the expansion? If that's the case, do I care? Should we increase further? Should we only be looking at enrollment and not be looking at ADA at this point? Right, so, and there's, so you want to know what am I thinking about? I'm thinking about piecemealing, I'm thinking about compliance with our numbers, what's driving it, and I'm thinking about what's the design, uh, impact, and what's the totality of design impact with each of the changes that have been proposed, and whether I can think about them separately or together. So that's, I mean, you don't know what I'm thinking about, that's.
Just to clarify, our total enrollment currently is four hundred and twenty-four students, so all total, that's, that's every student that could be on campus at any given time, four hundred and twenty-four.
I appreciate your, your correcting, just be out of.
I'll, I'll go back and check the numbers, I don't know. I mean, those, that's, that's from me, right? So I don't know how I got that, you know, so wrong.
So I, I, I appreciate it.
And I, so I think we have, you know, in the total number on campus could be four thirty, I think, five or four, I think, and then average, four thirty-six, and average is three ninety-four, so, um, and, and we are, um, we've been very mindful and thoughtful about that. It's really not much different than, you know, kind of where we've been the past, you know, few years. We're up a little bit, we had a great yield, um, last year, so that kind of increased things a little bit for us. But the, the, the proposals for us, Commissioner Targ, are, are not in, in response to, um, not solely in response to our numbers. Obviously, our chapel needs to be bigger because there are more, more students there. But, uh, but our facilities, our, our, our athletic facilities and that expansion, that, that's more about trying to support the needs of our current students, it's not to expand programming, it's not to add, uh, contests or games, um, it's actually to try and mitigate, you know, what we have so that we can have a more balanced approach to, to, to life for our students. So instead of having practices go long, um, or, or short, um, you know, we can actually have, you know, proper practices for our students, gives more opportunities for our students to engage in kind of that athletic piece, um, or that physical piece that's so important for, for, for he- mental, mental health and wellness. So it, it actually more responds to those, to those needs as opposed to creating more, more, and I understand, you, you, no one wants more, right? We, we like our size, we like who we are, um, and we think that's important because that's, that really speaks to our values, um, really knowing and understanding and developing the whole student. We don't do that if we're five or six or seven hundred students. That's not, that's not who we want to be, that's not what we're trying to be.
That's wholly consistent with where you were, with what you said before. And I looked at the numbers and I said, holy Toledo.
Yeah, no.
That's very impressive.
I'll, I'll, I'll work with, for it and get, get that corrected and accurate, I, I'm not sure how, again, that's on me, because I, I presented it, those are from me, that's not from, that's from me, so.
One of the things in a, in a, and that I'm going to, you know, to do from my perspective, and this is the perspective of the application, that I agree with you that the prairie is part of the taller valley in the other way around. And I don't want there to be any confusion about where I am, and, you know, I said it before, we all love the prairie. But it's also important that we treat all comers fairly and in a similar manner, and take them through the same process regardless of how we might feel about them, or applicants maybe who don't love so much. But, uh, uh, but if you say, so Nicholas, you're looking at the numbers, you're looking at what the CUP says, how come you aren't looking at the design that I need? And the answer is, from my perspective, I am, but I'm also looking at what the process is and how we treat, you know, folks fairly and keep us in a position where our process has integrity. So please, please don't confuse, certainly my, giving this a hard look for anything other than making sure that we've got a good and straight process.
Yeah, we're excited for the hard look and a reasonable look, and, and excited about going through this with you. We think it makes a lot of sense, um, and, and we believe in it, uh, and we think it really provides what our students need and, 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 and obviously a large percentage. And we think it really provides what our students need and, 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 and obviously a large percentage, twenty percent of our students come from Potola Valley. And, and so we, we actually think it makes a lot of sense, but we're looking for that hard reasonable look. We think that's a really important thing.
Everybody gets it. So I'm going to leave and I'm going to take my, uh, historical comments. And then can I give it back to you? And now you're just like five years.
Oh, um, yeah, um, so I haven't asked my questions of the applicant. Then we'll do discussion, right?
Then we'll do public comment.
Public comment.
Good time for a break after your questions.
Okay, good, let me do my questions, then we'll take a break. Good luck on your flight, okay? Thanks for coming down.
Yeah, thanks.
Um, I had a, Carter, did you put up that table with the two hundred and five thousand square foot if it was, um, I like that table by the way. And you had, um, I think, uh, if it were fifty acres and I guess fifty houses, it would be up at the two hundred and seventy thousand, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, this, this is a pretty brutish, you know, kind of. I mean, it doesn't take into event, into account, you know, unstable ground, but there is many unstable ground on the property. Doesn't take into account any flood zone. Don't think there's any flood zone in the property. But the, the biggest thing that would be different is that each site, you know, would have reduction, you know, for, you know, the amount of slope, you know, and amount of a, access, you know, roadway. So it's, it, it, but it's a, it's a pretty brutal kind of, you know, look.
Yeah, so that was my question, since there is slope, like the first gym or the earlier version of the gym was on a pretty steep slope. Slope comes into these calculations pretty heavily. I mean, might, I don't know what people did back in two thousand and five, but might they have taken into slope and that's how they got to this two hu- two hundred and five thousand was, um, that's kind of a residential number?
I'm probably the only guy around that, that was there.
Okay.
That was what we asked for. You know, it, it seemed rational to, you know, the leadership of the Priory. It's, it's gone up a little bit because we asked for a little increase, you know, for the, the stream building. And there was a little increase, you know, for, you know, to keep the little portals. It was pretty close to just what we asked for.
I see, not.
There, there wasn't, there wasn't a lot of analysis, you know, to, you know.
Okay, no other magic you're saying to that?
No.
Two hundred and five thousand.
And it, and it mostly happened with blocks. You know, there was a, there was a blob of, of performing arts center. You know, there wasn't a design, you know, there were just kind of blobs that were, you know, ambitioned and then we added up. Uh, and there's, there's been, you know, quite a bit of, you know, increase in specificity, you know, over the years. With the, the latest round of specificity was with the, uh, the six additional housing units. You know, that table was, you know, re-refined quite a lot, so.
Okay, and if you did that same table for, oh, for impervious surface?
It's there.
It is there.
It's, it's, it's the, the next, the next set of columns.
So if it were, um,
I can make it.
Yes, then it's bigger, good. Okay, so if it was a bunch of houses, it'd be in the three hundred and ninety-five thousand?
Yeah.
In the current, uh, C U P says three hundred and sixteen. And how close are you to that right now?
Well, we're, we're not close to it.
Okay, so you're not in danger of the impervious surface violation?
Okay.
I was wondering, if you take out that fire truck turnaround, does that get rid of impervious surface or the playground?
Well, it depends on what we put back to the playground.
Yeah, okay. And then also if we add that road, the extra road piece?
That was in, that was in the original.
But is that, that's not already counted in the three hundred and fifteen, is it?
It came out, I think it came out of what we were using. I, I don't know what happened.
Okay, I mean, I guess I'm asking, are you in danger of going over this number if that road gets built?
I, I, I think it's a great question. I would want to know. I, I know that it, for, for functional purposes, some of what, you know, you know, as, as a design team and a ownership team, you know, so, some of the numeric limits kind of go, you don't even know how to deal with, you know, because what we've got is a campus that, you know, wasn't, wasn't originally planned with. Would you, would you plan a campus with the, with the organization that it is? You know, it's, it's, it's quite a, you know, quite a bit more organic, you know, and, you know, kind of catch as catch can, you know. When the monks were doing it by themselves, you know, it was. And I, I, I think the original monastery was, you know, originally designed as a, you know, the motel six.
And through, through the acting chair.
Yes, acting, good.
Um, I would just echo, um, Carter's statements is that staff's understanding is that there was not like a mathematical limit that was established and then they built to it. The conditional use permit was based on what they requested, like based on their needs. And we don't have zoning districts that have something that is comparable. And so that's the way that the C U P has always operated. So I think this is an interesting intellectual exercise. And I, I agree that it's a rough number, but it kind of gives an order of magnitude.
Yeah.
Um, and so I think the planning commission should think of it that way as like kind of a reference point for what might be reasonable.
Yeah. Good, thank you, thank you, that's all good. Okay, that's all my questions, so no more questions from the commissioners? Okay, we will take a five-minute break. And then when we come back, we will take public comments on the, this Priory discussion. One. Okay, welcome back, everyone. Now we're gonna, we're at the part, we're gonna take public comments on the Priory project. So if anybody on Zoom has a question, please put up your, or comment, please put up your hand. Great, I see Caroline's hand up. Caroline?
Great, thank you very much. I know I'm limited in my speech, so, uh, this is a very complex, uh, plan tonight because you have those who understand. We all understand that there has been, uh, tremendous changes, um, since two thousand and five. Um, but the question is, um, how much do the residents in Potola Valley have to bear these changes? And how we can accommodate and make sure that, uh, we come to collaborative, uh, proposal here? So I really appreciate the comments of Commissioner Tark, Linda Brothers and Kostinsky. You made valid points. We want to make sure that you really understand everything that is proposed. Because what the staff has mentioned to you in page twelve is still debated, we have not gotten any answers and we still are questioning it. So I hope that you will request, uh, full answers to the impervious surface and, 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 you know, the, the data they provided you, that we get, uh, a look at the joint use agreement, the traffic noise mitigation. We want to be successful, but the reality is only twenty per, twenty percent of students come in, from Potola Valley. And then you have a hundred and forty-one or more staff. And why are not more people from Potola Valley hired? These are all issues that you have to consider. I'm sure we can come to an agreement, but there's several issues. Um, this is not just the gym and the ministry because these are great, uh, projects. But as you see, there's other projects in the line and there is no plans for it. Um, we love this community, we love the Priory, but we have to come to consensus and we have to understand how this benefits the city or the town. Because so far, I think we can do more to help the town. Thank you.
Thanks, Caroline. Any other questions from people here or on Zoom? Go ahead. I think you, it's best if you come to the mic so it gets, um, recorded.
A parent of the Priory chi- children. And I think that idea of having that little pass-through road, you know, the sooner you could get that in there and get the traffic out of the middle of the school and get, uh, simplified that the traffic across Portola Valley, Portola Road would make just a huge safety difference for the students. So I don't, I don't know how you segment these things, but that sure sounds like something that I would put in front. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Good, and on Zoom, Christie Corley?
Yes, thank you. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thanks. Um, you know, I was concerned about something Ronnie mentioned and I do appreciate him mentioning it, the statement that the C U P, uh, would encourage, uh, the public to be involved and have real input and keep us involved in the process. I think the reason that's in there is because this is on a main road in our town and we all visualize it daily. And I think, uh, in that regard, um, I've suggested a few times that why wasn't the public invited to the site review today? I found myself going out there alone, not really know what I'm looking for. And it would have been really nice just to take a walk with a knowledgeable person. So I had asked for this option in the past and we used to do it in town. I don't think you would be overwhelmed with lots and lots of people showing up, only those that are truly interested. So I would encourage you, when it is a school and when it is fifty acres and it is on a main road, that you include us. We do know that Stanford Wedge offered tours, we know that Hawthorne offered tours. Hawthorne even took, uh, fifteen tables in our town center to talk about the pros and cons of Hawthorne. This is what we want. We want to be involved when we can be involved, and it's just so easy to put out the invitation. And that is our town, to invite all and take input of all. My other comments include, and even though Laura said in the last five years we haven't done it, I really think that it needs to be done, so I would just say that. I'm concerned about current drainage off the site, within the site, making sure that what is not working is improved. And I think you might know what that is. I think down Gobetta Lane, I don't see, you know, swales on either side of that road. It's going to, you know, there's a big puddle at the bottom, and then it tends to go down the pedestrian trail that we use and fill it up, and then we have a big drainage over outside the fence. And so I do believe that area has a hill on one side and a hill on the other, and it's taking water from both sides. I get that, but we need to do better with drainage. We need to do, check our trees. I noticed a tree went down on the entrance. So how often are trees checked? That means analysis of tree health and safety. And then traffic circulation is a, is a big concern. You know, regarding the trees, we already lost a person, a 30-year-old person, to a tree going down. I don't want that to happen to anybody at the priory as well. The traffic circulation study needs to be done in a more thorough way, and I'm concerned about noise. Thank you.
Thanks, Kristy. Okay, I see no more hands up in the room or in the Zoom, so I'll close public comments. And I'll bring it back to the commission. I think you saw the questions that the applicant would like discussion on, so if we could kind of focus or answer those, would be great.
I take one from the public comment. Kristy Corley asked about the public being able to visit the site. I just wanted to give the applicant a chance to respond if they wanted to, if the public wants to visit the site.
Let me start first.
Okay, sorry.
And that is, we did have a couple members of the public on the site, so we noticed it to 1,000-foot radius. So those folks were welcome to come. You know, because this building is in a prominent location, staff would recommend to the applicant team that they actually make public tours available. And so that's something we will be recommending to them. So we'll be creating like a project webpage, and we'll be circulating this project more broadly in the community. So those steps will be upcoming. Thanks. Do you want to go first, Linda?
Sure, sure. First of all, it was really nice to be over there, even though it was what a deluge I've put myself into in a long, long, long time. See what you have in mind. I guess I have a kind of rambling set of comments here. I, I like the idea that we discussed, and it didn't come through as a strong theme, Carter, as you spoke, but of having more of a master plan. When I'm new to this, and I go back and I start looking at the CUP 21 and 05, and, you know, the 1900s, you've got kind of a crazy history, and having a more of a master plan for someone with a simple little brain like mine, so I could see where each thing fits in, really, I think, a good way to go. And my earlier question was really about the construction pieces of it in particular. A lot of the planning, campus planning I've done is over at Berkeley, where they, they can't even seem to spell CEQA. So I am very mindful of Nicholas's comment about, and Laura's concern about segmentation and piecemeal. So that's another thing to me that makes it important to have a real master plan, so you can really understand how, how we work our way through CEQA. Another comment that I had, that I also thought, thought I heard today, and maybe this is a question, and I think it goes to Nicholas's comments about a number of students. I got the sense that an awful lot of what you're doing, asking to do here, at least at the locker room, has to do with gender equity and making the facilities for women more equal. And, and to me, having equal sports facilities is a high priority. So if you want my feedback on that, that one goes to the top of the list, right up there with drinking fountains. Next point. Carter, I, I used to do a lot of math when I was a scientist, before I became a lawyer. I didn't particularly like your, your one acre. It does give very rough idea, but I, I think there are just so many footnotes to what one-acre housing on 50 acres would result in compared to making that comparison to the, to the campus. I don't think we really have to get into that, because you're so far from the theoretical limit that you came up with there. But I mean, if you ever tried to rely on that, I think I'd be putting together the 300 or 400 footnotes before I'd really actually get around to looking at the numbers, you know, what a house is and stuff. I understand the problem, you're trying to come up with some, some paradigm, and there just isn't a good one. But to me, that's, I don't want to say it too strongly, but to me, that's almost more misleading than it is helpful. Because a house is not like a school, and a house doesn't have buildings, and the house doesn't have gyms. And so to me, it's kind of a perturbation of the zoning code. You wanted feedback, so that's feedback. I guess the final thing, having said how much I support the sports facilities, is your big gymnasium. Really got a lot of rain. I actually left and sat out on the road there and looked back a little bit. You mentioned this, and I'm sure that you've considered alternatives, but, you know, it looks really pretty on a map to have the front parallel to the track. But I really wonder, in terms of, of visual impact, if you could change the direction of the building a little bit, even if you change it 20 or 30 degrees, when you come down the hill on Portola Road, you wouldn't be looking right at it. I, I, to me, think it's kind of out of character with the whole character of the town to have a large building. It's gonna be a large building, and I can't think of anything that, that, that's as visually large on, on, on the roads around here that I drive on. And I know you want to, you know, put some trees and other things there. I love looking at the track. I mean, I slow down and look at the track when I drive by, and it's like, yeah, you go, kids, you know what I mean? I just, it really is attractive, it's open, it's really kind of the visual entry to your whole priory campus. I mean, yeah, you have a road, but, you know, that's like a tree-lined, you know, magnolia-lined tree to a plantation somewhere in the south. But that's the real visual place that I see the priory as through that school. And to put a big building there, just, it's going like fingernails on a scratch board, on an eraser board to me. I know you, you, you've forgotten more than I will ever learn about, about buildings, but I think, you know, I just was thinking, if you could angle it a little bit, maybe move it a little bit. I know how you want to try to keep that driveway and minimize the impacts of parking, but you could maybe even just, you know, rearrange it a little bit over here. And you'd have, you'd probably have cost ramifications, and, you know, you have to figure all that out. But I just, the visual thing just really is the thing that makes me the most uncomfortable. The rest of what we saw, I totally understand the changes to the chapel and the, the new construction over there on the existing gym. Those offices were, were pretty full. That's, that's gotta be tough for your coaches to operate in there and so forth. So, um, that's my feedback. Thank you again.
Thank you for the walkthrough today. Everything that I saw makes a lot of sense to me. So for, you know, the, what you call the minor projects, I mean, I guess I would want, you know, more staff feedback and analysis on if they are exactly compatible with the current CUP. But from my, from my standpoint, they make sense, and I would want to try to do what we could to, to help enable that, even under the CUP and the, the current CUP and the dance. Getting a new iteration on the CUP. Yeah, and then you asked about the, whether the, the gym would probably only require adjustment for condition four. And it's the way it seems to me, again, I'd want more understanding from staff. I'd want to understand Commissioner Tark's concerns around, are you, are you not actually compliant with the CUP? And what that means or not. From what I saw in the agenda packet, it seems like there has been quite a lot of attention to both the traffic planning and analysis as well as the noise analysis. So this seemed like you're taking a lot of care there. But yes, I just want to understand those concerns a little bit better. I, I don't know exactly the road extension. I don't know. I want to understand that better. Does that fall into the same category of the condition four and increasing the max road plan and surface, or is that going to involve some other things? I just don't know. I don't know the answers to that without learning more about it. And then, yeah, I, I guess the one thing there, I'd want to learn more about the community use and the joint use agreement that maybe exists with the, with the existing basketball gym. I just didn't think like I understood all those details. And I don't think it's a requirement, but I'd want to maybe think about, should something like that apply to the new space or not? If it is a form of the existing gym. Want to learn more about that. Perhaps community use of the new building. And then in terms of it raising concerns, definitely it's going to be a big building off of Portola Road. I, I think, I, I think it is mitigated a lot, like you mentioned, by being that that area is lower down, so it's not going to tower over the roadway. It's also going to be a fair distance from the roadway. And I don't know, I, me, I almost wouldn't really want to hide it necessarily, and like shield it by trees. But, you know, I think a building can be attractive as well, and be a kind of fit in with the landscape. And yes, personally, I feel comfortable that, you know, going through a process with ASCC and getting input and reacting to that, that we could have a good plan come out of that. So, yeah, overall, I'm supportive of what I've seen in the major projects.
And for me, on the, can I call them the minor projects, the five projects or so that are not the, the new gym, those definitely make sense to me, and I would love to see if there's a simple planning commission method to allow those to go through. To me, I'm a resident, that's why you have planning commissions. Of course, people care about the number of buildings, and the light spill, and the color, and, you know, these plants. But as a resident, I don't really care whether 5,000 square feet is an academic building or a locker room, or, you know, to me, that's, it doesn't affect me as a resident. So I would like those numbers to be tradable. I understand they aren't right now, but is there a simple, if there's a simple thing we could just vote on kind of quickly to allow that 5,000 square feet to be juggled, I would be very much in favor of that. And then, as you know, I, before the last meeting, I went out and walked at the school drop-off time, and I really hated the traffic I saw. The cars getting piled up on Portola Road, and cars trying to come out, and cars couldn't get by. So I'm thrilled that you've been able to work the Gobetta Lane thing, and that you reported good. Since we were meeting today, I went out on Monday and walked around again, just with the priory on my mind. And from my standpoint, I know it was only one day, but it looked great. Almost all the cars I saw were turning in the Gobetta, just a few in the other way, and there was no chance the cars were gonna back up onto Portola. So from my standpoint of data point of one on one day, it's great. But my data point a year to go, one data point was, it seemed very bad. So that's great. I'm thrilled that that new plan worked out, and we even report that the parents like it better, so. Good win. So that brings me to the, I can see, I've been up to that part where the cars now wind around. I can see that's got many annoyances or other things going on at the school. So I'm very much in favor of this new little road you're talking about, and that apparently used to be laid out in the CUP. So I'd also be in favor if there's any quick, this might be an oxymoron, quick planning commission thing we could do that allows that to go ahead very, or at least the approval. I know you've got a lot of other work to do, but allows the planning commission approval to be very quick, I'd be in favor of that. And then the gym, I feel like I have just the obvious things that anybody in Portola Valley would have, which is, ooh, big building. You know, I don't want it to be pink. I really don't want light spill. I think that's a huge worry with a gym, but like Ronnie said, it's down a little. That seems good, and it's, it's pretty far from the road. So as long as you're very attentive to the light spill, then there's going to be ASCC approval. That's, that's good for me. You guys aren't going to design something bad, but you all know that when we give these approvals, it could be 30 years, somebody could pop up. Not you two. But for me, the-
Still gonna be here.
Yeah, we believe that.
I may not be, but this guy might.
No, I think that's all my comments. Okay, so then, we have some technical work to do, mostly related to CEQA and segmentation and how we view this. When we had initial conversations with the applicant, I really encouraged them to just bring forward kind of everything that was on their mind. And that was in reaction to the fact that we fairly recently did the conditional use permit amendment to increase the number of students. And at that time, they didn't really anticipate any physical projects coming forward. But things do change in their world, and sometimes fairly rapidly, as they've explained to me, especially in relationship to funding. And so we're trying to kind of react to the interest of the planning commission, the interest of the applicant. But we really do honor and take very seriously Commissioner Tark's comments about the process, in a fair process and a consistent process. So we can do some follow-up work on this and see if we can come up with some different options that we think could be legally sound and appropriate. And I think it would also be a good use of time for the revised project to go back to ASCC. And maybe for ASCC to get on the site as well. So we do have two new ASCC members, one returned and one new. Rebecca Flynn and Dana Brain are coming on ASCC. So we'll be able to go back to having site visits. So I think what we'll do then is we can do a site visit with ASCC. We can have members- We can, um, have members of the public invited to that as well. We can duplicate what the, um, planning commission saw today. So more people can have the same information. Um, and almost certainly with less rain. Cause it'll be in June, so if it's still raining in June, we might have bigger problems. So I think those are gonna be the next steps while we work out on the technical side, how we wanna look at the phasing of this. But that way, at least they can continue to make progress, um, on their project. And then it, this project will be back in front of you, you know, probably a couple of times in different formats, depending on what we work on with them related to the CEQA review. So probably not back in front of you immediately, um, because we've got some, some CEQA work. But I think we'll, we'll work on it with them and see what we can come up with based on this feedback. It's really helpful.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much.
Agenda, I didn't think I was gonna be running the meeting at this point in the meeting, but okay. Uh, so we'll close out the priori discussion. Next, we have commission reports. So did either of you attend, um, a ASCC meeting or have anything to report on?
I did my liaison to, uh, one meeting. Unlike Nicholas, I was getting off an airplane, not on an airplane. And it was, uh, it was very helpful. I did have one thing I didn't understand, which I'll just talk to Laura about off, off limit, offline. But the other thing is, I believe that as a liaison, I was not informed if the ASCC got a site tour. So I just went up and did it from the road by myself. But you might think about whether, we might think about whether in a liaison role, we also wanna do a site tour if the ASCC is doing it.
Yeah, so the ASCC hasn't been doing, um, site tours because of the, the current composition and their availability.
Got it.
So once we go back to doing ASCC site tours, the planning commission liaison and the council liaison are invited. So you don't have to come as a liaison, but you're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, uh, let's see now, staff report. Yes. The council is scheduled to review the housing element for potential adoption next Wednesday, May 10th. Same time, same place, right here, seven o'clock. Then there will be, that's the main thing on the agenda next week. There's a couple of other things on there too. And then we expect, um, council members to give us further direction on what they've been calling the housing element post-approval process. So that will be upcoming, but no specific updates. But I'll let the planning commission know how that's going and what's happening. So you can, um, tune in if you are interested and participate in that meeting. We received quite a bit of public comment since the last meeting. And the, um, I think council has had kind of a lot to think about. And a lot of people are looking forward, um, to this next upcoming meeting. After that, my department kind of goes into a little bit of a transition mode because we focus so much time and energy related to the housing element. So you'll start to see a little bit of changes, not, not too big, but I like to keep the planning commission updated. We'll start to have, Adrian Smith is our senior planner. She'll start to get involved in the oversight of single-family home projects and start to get involved in the ASCC. And then Adrian will be taking the lead to bring back the zoning code amendments related to the housing element. So you all paused your work, we kind of paused you right in the middle. So we'll get started with that again and bring those zoning code amendments forward. So we'll be seeing that in the, um, kind of we'll get, as soon as we can get going again over the next several months, we'll be working on that kind of through the summertime. And then, um, I'll be taking the lead on the safety element. So we've also kind of paused the safety element. The committees have done a lot of review. I anticipate we'll, um, pop into the town council and just do a check-in, make sure that they know where we're at and make sure that we have a path forward. So your focus will be on zoning for a little while and then you'll be seeing the safety element in the following months after that. So those are the big items that you have upcoming for the next six months or so, as well as any, um, routine, uh, single-family home projects that come through. We, there's also, um, changes in the state law related to ADUs. And so we'll have to make a decision about, we might, they're, they're small enough that we might be able to do it administratively. We can just, for now, you know what I mean? Know that our local ordinance is being trumped because we have so much work in front of us. And we're gonna be going through a transition with the town attorney. So kind of depending on how we work out some of those priorities, you may or may not see like a quick cleanup of the ADU ordinance. So we'll see how that goes. We might be able to live without it for a little while. We've also been waiting for some feedback from HCD on our ADU ordinance. So that might take a little while, um, to get to us anyway. So I'll let you know how that goes, um, and how that's gonna fit into the work plan. So those are the main things that we've got coming up.
Any of the, um, post-housing element, whatever they ended up calling it, will any of those elements come back to us?
Um, several of them will ultimately come through the planning commission. So, um, they have, the, the timelines are still kind of estimates, not finalized timelines. Some of the deliverables start in fall of this year and stretch out over the next kind of 12 to 18 months. So, um, we don't have a specific work plan yet. So the, the first step is the council members will finalize, because it's in the form of a colleague's memo, so they are the lead. And then they'll bring that to the council. I give feedback, but they're, they're leading, um, what that plan will include. And then the full council will weigh in on it. And then staff will give recommendations about how to implement the plan. And so there's anything that eventually has to be adopted by the council, anything related to planning and zoning will come through you on the way. We just don't know exactly what form it'll take or when it'll be yet.
Not related to that, but is there anything lined up for our next meeting?
Right now, there's nothing lined up for the next meeting. So there is a good chance that meeting will be canceled, but I haven't made the final decision. I wanna just check with everyone, make sure I'm not missing anything. And then, um, especially for newer planning commissioners, I usually do kind of a periodic check-in on everybody's calendars. So just kind of think ahead a little bit, because we do have quite a bit of work to do again in the next six months or so, of course. Um, so you'll get an email from me to just make sure that I know when, when people are available and to make sure we've got, you know, the, the full house and, or at least the quorum for all the staff as we move forward. We should take, uh, public comments from, please, commission staff. Okay, um, time for public comments on the commission reports and Laura's staff report. Great, we have one in the audience here, Mary Huffey.
Hi, Jennifer, yourself.
What? I'm Mary Huffey. I may be the liaison or I may not be, but I think I'm the liaison. If not, uh, I have, I guess I'm operating this comment as, uh, maybe as a liaison, uh, which is that there's so much going on with the safety element right now and the other committees. Would that be something that they could do a little earlier rather than, uh, later? Would they, is there enough information coming in at this point? So that they, they could get a running start on it from other committees?
So that the other, so the recommending committees have done their reviews. We need to kind of circle back with them for the, um, post-adoption plan and make sure we kind of checked off all the boxes that the council wanted us to check off. Um, and then I'm imagining we'll go to council and give council an update of where we are and compile all those comments, share them really broadly. So the council can see them, the planning commission can see them, the public can see them. We'll notify you when we posted all those comments. So you can start to kind of ruminate over it. It's pretty hard for us to staff for you and for you to work on multiple major initiatives. So we're gonna, we'll come up with something so we kind of get your momentum going and not break it up too much, you know? So maybe like we'll do a piece of zoning and then, uh, you know, two meetings on safety element and then finish zoning and then finish safety element, kind of something like that. So I hope that that kind of answers the question. We're still kind of working it out. Correct. Yeah. So our team has to spend some time, our technical team has to spend some time with the comments from the committees and kind of see how they're all coming together. And then we're gonna, we're gonna kind of analyze them to give you feedback. It's like, you know, some of the comments are, go outside of what's typically in a safety element, but that's not necessarily bad. That could be great, right? And so we'll say, hey, this is not normal in a safety element, but we can do it. There's no problem. And if we do it, there's something to consider. Or if we see any problems, we'll try to bring those up, um, so that you and the council can consider it. So that's the basic format that we've got for it. But as you know, same team kind of working on everything. So, um, after we get through housing element adoption, that will, um, open up that capacity. Uh, next, Kristy Corley.
Yes, I had three questions. Is it true that the zoning, uh, we have three years to do zoning if the housing element is passed? That's my first question. And then I am more interested in the ADU change in the laws. If you can be more specific, so we're not wondering. We would appreciate knowing what that is. And I'm not sure that the public knows where, that it's listed on the town website that Deanna and Rebecca have been, uh, installed into the ASCC. So getting those names on the website would be great. And, uh, let's see, you know, I guess the more information, the better. So I'm always surprised when planning commission meetings are canceled when we so, when we need to educate residents to learn more about the housing element, which is really housing sites that are going to happen. I don't think residents really understand this is a housing element. It still doesn't even make sense to me. It's the housing sites that are planned for the next eight years. So if you just say it with what it is, you would get people learning about it. So are we gonna send things home to mailboxes to really make sure that all those not on TV forum are informed? I, those are my main questions for the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want me to answer those questions? Yes, if you have any questions. Yeah. Um, the question was, do we have three years to do the zoning? And the answer to that is no. If we would have adopted the housing element earlier, then we would have had three years to do the zoning. But because we didn't adopt it, um, quick enough, we only have one year to do the zoning. Wow. On the ADU changes, point well taken. We just haven't, Kara and I have not had the capacity to, um, fully analyze the law and put it out, um, for the public to review. ASCC names to the website, point well taken. We do not currently have a permanent town clerk. So we have three people covering for that and that would be a clerk function. So I agree, just can't do it. Um, and then why are planning commission meetings canceled? Because I, Laura C. Russell, staff all of these meetings myself. And so if you don't have an item that has to be in front of you, I do not convene this body to chat because, um, a girl's got to sleep at some point. Good, and you don't wanna come just chat either. Great. Um, I think that's all our topic, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
I'm allowed to second, that's why I jump in. A chair is not allowed to make a motion. I can suggest a motion and then I can second, even if you're the substitute, substitute chair. So I dump on the adjournments. Thanks, everyone. Good night.
Thank you.
We have to vote if all in favor of the adjournment. Aye, all in. Good, thanks, everyone.